It's literally right now.
Thank you for today, by the way. That was really useful stuff to bring after work.
Good.
So I think we're getting some good early numbers here. And I've also got Christina sitting on the March date before you leave to see if we can get you.
Okay, yeah, she emailed me already, yeah. I think she just picked me in the hallway and...
How many days a week are you here? You're only here like two days a week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got other things to do.
Yeah. Running goals. I'm like, it's nice weather. It's nice this week. You should be out there.
But you know, I've been meeting all day, then saving tomorrow, and you know, our project over in St. John's is just about wrapped up, so I'll free up my time a little bit.
Oh, yeah? When will that open?
It's open. We open for leasing. We've already leased about 10% pre-leased, so...
Oh, that's great. We should go over and have a look at that. We should have a field trip.
We should, we should.
To where?
St. Joshua.
Oh, I did.
The mayor came in throughout construction. It was the last April, I think.
Yeah.
A lot has changed. Pretty much all was framed up, but it was closed in, yeah. But now it's 99.99% finished. We also have a little touch-ups here and there to do.
You had your CBO?
We have a TCO. Our CBO is coming, I believe, by next week.
Excellent. Thank you.
Neighbors are very happy. They're very pleased. We had a lot of good things said about us on Facebook.
Great.
All the naysayers came around.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Actually, I was meeting with a couple of the... Where's Danny from? One of the Neighborhood Associations?
The Man Shop.
The Man Shop is one of the... He was one of our opponents now. He's like, "When are you starting your next one?" I'm like, "I need some time off from you guys." And now we're waiting for the next one because we have another project over there that's going to start, a small project, so... I'm like, oh, the naysayers are like, "When do you start the next one?" I'm like...
That's a good thing.
I should officially open the meeting, so I'm calling to order the board session for February 6th. And we are starting out with a meet and greet with developers of Coho Point, Calhoun Creek, Dr. Boulari, and Lila Aman will be presenting.
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thanks for having us. We just wanted to take a moment. Again, my name's Leila Aman. I'm the city's development manager. And I've been working with Dr. Free Boulari, BlackRock LLC. He's our developer and our partner on the Coho Point at Calhoun Creek property. We recently executed an exclusive negotiating agreement effective January 30th, so we are now officially beginning negotiations. And we wanted to take this opportunity to provide you an opportunity and the public to know that we are starting that work and looking forward to engaging with the public and as we move forward with our development partners to create what we hope to see is an amazing building. So with that, I just will turn it over to you or to Dr. Boulari if you have any questions of us. We're also joined, by the way, by Angela Creus, who works with Dr. Boulari, and Alan Jones of Jones Architecture, who will be the project architect.
Thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, councilors. It's nice to be here. Looking forward to our project together. Get that running on the way. We can bring you a nice piece of development to the City of Milwaukee, which would be well-deserved.
And just because some people don't know, you've been here. You've been in Milwaukee for a long time. Can you talk a little bit about your history here?
Oh, absolutely. Obviously, I'm a dentist, and I have a practice here in downtown Milwaukee. I purchased a building at the corner of Main Street and Washington back in the early 1990s and through a full development or rehab of the building. And I've been part of the City of Milwaukee since then, since the mid-1990s. And I've been looking at this piece of property for years because if you're sitting in my dental chair, that's all you can see. You see the wall, you see the waterfall, you see the river. You're looking at the potential of what a great, great location it is, you know? Number one rule in real estate is location, location, location. And this particular parcel has all three. It's a great location. Looking forward to work with the city. Seems like Mr. Mayor and you councilors are eager to have a nice project, and we're eager to deliver. And looking forward to it.
Thank you.
What's the next step in the process?
You're probably more qualified to say.
Yeah. Well, we start meeting. We'll be holding kind of an official kickoff, which will include Dr. Boulari's team as well as members from the city's team. Really, one of the first things that we have to do is figure out what the buildable land area is. So there's some technical work that I'll be helping to coordinate with Dr. Boulari's team to look at issues related to the floodplain and access. And so we'll be doing those as the first steps. And then we start to move into conceptual design. And we will be reaching out to the public. We've agreed to do sort of three outreach points throughout the entire process. And we intend to, kind of aside from the technical, we will also be doing a performance timeline. So sort of timeline, kind of working with his team, the architecture team, and starting to chart out what the next, basically, nine to 12 months look like. And then where the public engagement will fit in there. So...
Okay, great. Well, I'm glad that you mentioned the public engagement part because that was all that was very important to all of us.
Yep.
As this proceeds, we're going to make sure the public has some input, bunch of thoughts and concerns.
Absolutely. I think any project will affect the neighborhood and the community. So reaching out to people early in the project is really important. We've done it in the past in other projects. And you know, on the last project, we had multiple meetings, and it helps. It helps to know what it is the community wants, what it is that you would like to see on the project, and having an understanding so we can deliver. Because not knowing, you can go through a whole project at the end, you're like, "Oh, I wish we had this and we had that." So we're hoping to be able to have those meetings early on and try to come up with a concept that works for everybody. Maybe not 100%, but 99.9%.
We'll get the naysayers.
It's funny because we always get naysayers coming around. And then I had a project in Selwood, and the whole community... I was the first developer to actually put a mixed-use development in Selwood back in 2000, early 2014, and we had a lot of naysayers. At the end of the project, I came back and I told the neighbors who were right at the nearest proximity to the project, I said, "How did we do? We got A minus." I said, "Why A minus? Why not A plus?" And they said, "One said I don't like the color. Another said, you know, those windows, a little bit bigger would have been nicer." But overall, I was happy with the A minus. I thought that's good enough, A minus.
Lessons learned. We'll bring some of that to this new project.
Yeah. And we'll be utilizing as much of our resources in terms of website and engagement with the public as we move forward as well. And so that's a big part of what I'll be doing and sort of coordinating with Dr. Boulari's team about when those touchpoints are and when you can be most effective and help influence the project. So at the end, we are delivering a building that the community that you can be proud of.
When the chance we got, a few of us to go tour his project up in St. John's, it was clear that there'd been a lot of community interaction because they solved traffic issues for that area. They created plaza space. They did a lot of things that really make it an amenity to that part of St. John's. And it's, you know, you're not just going to do that cold. It was really well done, at least in the early construction part.
I have an open invitation for you to come and visit. I'm available. Just let me know what day works for you, and I'll be happy to walk you around.
Take care on that.
Most credit goes to Jones Architect.
Well, thank you also for being here tonight.
Yeah. Now, we're excited to get going and looking forward to collaborating with everybody. I find that the most successful projects are the projects that have the most input.
I'll take mine. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize that. Alan Jones, Jones Architecture. I've just found over time that the most successful projects are the project where there is the most engagement. And oftentimes, the projects with the most constraints, and this is a difficult site, end up being the projects that are the most thoughtful in the end. So we're very excited to be part of the team and think it's going to be a great project.
Am I remembering correctly that you were the architect on some of the buildings at One North?
I worked on the One North development as part of the firm that I worked with prior. So I wasn't the lead architect on that, but I was in that office while that was going on.
Yeah, I love those buildings. Yeah, that's a great project, too.
I think that that's... We just wanted a chance to meet formally and to introduce you to the public. So if you don't have any other questions, I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
All right. Next up, we have the transportation utility bonding proposal. Haley Fish, our finance director, and Charles Eaton, engineering director, will be presenting.
And the guys in town.
Just matching because they've got the same thing. They dress together.
Is that a uniform thing?
We didn't have a chance to color coordinate with them, though.
Well, you will before that.
I have, why, you're okay. I've got my red. I'm good. Yeah.
You broke it. Hi, so I'm Haley Fish, the finance director. For those who don't know, this is Charles Eaton, engineering director. And then our other introductions are that that is Greg Long, our bond counsel. He works for Oric. And this is John Peterson, our financial advisor, and he works for Piper Jaffray. So the purpose of this presentation is to present the bonding proposal that we presented a staff report for. We're going to go through some of the debt issuance scenarios very quickly. We've kind of reorganized them in the staff report. They were organized by both by series but also by programs, safe, SSMP, and gas tax. And we're going to focus on the different phases here. We have an updated recommendation for you guys to consider. We'll go over the rate analysis that was included in the staff report, and then we have some policy considerations that we want you guys to be aware of when you make your decision. So Phase 1 was set up for the high-priority safe projects and balanced across the three different programs. So the difference between Scenario 1 and Scenario 2 actually comes in later phases mostly. It has to do with making sure that we had capacity to cover the $3.8 million within the safe program that we need to have available when we get grants. So it's the grant portion. And so we ran two scenarios, assuming that, one, we would need the funds during Phase 2, and then the second scenario is that we would need the funds during Phase 3. So here, and the key things that we identified were the bond proceeds, the net interest of this phase, and then the current estimated total interest cost. And again, so those, in those scenarios, John, is it correct that they're about 50 basis points higher than what things are hitting the market at right now?
That's correct. This scenario is at current market plus half a percent.
So if they were issued today, like if we had all our information and we brought them to market, we'd most likely get a rate closer to 3.3 rather than 3.8. So we're trying to build in some due to timing.
So is that... I did the math on the full three tranches, but does the interest rate on this also work out to around 41%?
I mean, in terms of total or interest total? Interest, right. Interest to principal.
Yeah.
That's very close. That's in large part because this tranche is using an estimate of just 50 basis points higher than current rates, whereas the later tranches are assuming 150 basis points higher than current rates. You know, what you're seeing there is, you know, 9.2 is less than half of 19.3, so you're closer to 30%. And if those other tranches were also down at today's rates, or even just today's rates plus 50, you'd be closer to 30%.
So here's proceed this, Scenario 1, Phase 1, or Scenario 1 and 2, Phase 1. So in Phase 2, you're at a lot closer to 100% interest versus proceeds. So your proceeds in Scenario 1, so again, Scenario 1 assumes you don't need those bonds or those matching funds until Phase 3, and so that's why your proceeds are lower and your interest is lower. But again, that total interest cost is at the 4.7 because we've built in the 1.5% because these won't be issued for three years, and we assume that the market interest rates will go up over time. And then Scenario 2 assumes that we need those matching funds in that second phase, and so we need more proceeds then. Phase 3 then flips that scenario, and again, your interest cost is less in total, but closer to Phase 1 than Phase 2. But again, you're, we're still assuming that rates won't go up more than the 1, the 150 basis points here.
And so the scenarios 1 and 2 are, you're just showing us two different options, and we're not, we're not going to be making a decision on that for a couple of years till we see what...
Right. We would not, if, when we proceed with Phase 2, we would not include those matching funds unless we had commitments for those grants. So a different scenario could be that we issue a fourth series of debt just to cover those matching funds because the timing doesn't correspond to any of the planned phases.
And could there be a hybrid, like we do half in Phase 2 and half in Phase 3, or not likely?
It depends on what the grants were and the requirements. The matching funds could, depending on which of the projects comes forward, need all of the funds for the one project, or it could not.
Yeah, you included the entire match.
The 3.8, which was in the program, escalated to either year 2024 or 2029.
So it's highly unlikely that we will get every project that we have in the program for grants.
Right.
That would not happen within nine years at some point. There's just way too many of them. When you throw in Stanley, Greenway, all the rest of them.
Since the debt service goes over the 30, what we're proposing 30 years or 25 years, I wanted to make sure there was cash flow sufficient to meet the program requirements. So then, the updated recommendation from staff would be that we proceed in pursuance of the first phase of bonding, but that we maximize the first issuance by front-loading some additional contract design to take advantage of the current rates in the current year. This would change the draft proposal by limiting the number of series to one versus leaving it unlimited. And that would require staff to bring back future proposals to council for consideration when Phase 2 and 3 were to proceed for the debt. So, and to note that this would mean that the projects, that we would be designing more projects through the contracts in Phase 1 that wouldn't be constructed until Phase 2 was pursued or there was sufficient cash flow in addition to debt service to actually construct those projects. Does that make sense?
Well, that makes sense, but this is Greek.
Right.
Limiting the number of series to one. What does that mean?
Okay, so in the staff proposal, there were some variables that you had. They were the aggregate principal amount, the alternate maximum maturity dates. Right now, we've set 30 years. There's, we've put in a true interest cost of 6%. Again, that's higher than what we've projected, but it gives you room over the six-year period for the market.
Wait, say that one again. Could you back up on that one? You put in six, what'd you say?
So in the draft, we put in that none of the individual issuances could have a total interest cost more than 6%.
Okay.
So, and the highest interest rate we have projected, I think, was 4.1.
Well, total, so it's the average over the thing, is 5.
We did not limit this number of series of debt. So that means we could issue, right now, the concept was for three, but like I said, if we needed to issue a fourth issuance for just the matching funds, without a limit, it allows for that. But you can put in a limit, which would then require us to come back with a new debt authorization resolution for additional series of debt.
But what you're recommending here is just to do one series?
So previously, we put in unlimited so that we would have one authorization for the entire program, assumed in the nine-year plan for the nine years. But the proposal currently is to limit it to one so that we can get Phase 1 going and off the ground, and then you guys have more time to consider the future phases.
And one of the complicating factors that, I mean, it sounds to me like you're saying this is simpler to get it going.
Right.
And doing the full line here.
If people were uncomfortable with the entire program's debt service, all three phases of that committing to that now, this would allow us to commit to Phase 1, and then you would have further time to consider Phase 2 and 3.
Part of why staff amended this is because we had certain expectations when we were looking at the nine-year programming. And in that, we were expecting that our designing would be partially funded out of Tranche 2. We want to make sure that we keep designing as you guys are making decisions about a future tranche, so we wanted to move some of the design phases into the first tranche so that we have more to guarantee exactly how much money you guys are going to be pulling now at Tranche 2. So that's what, and I'd look to my team to tell me I'm wrong, but that's what we're discussing, is that by moving those things, we just give you more certainty about the exact amount needed for Tranche 2 if we move those out to Tranche 1.
And how much additional work is there for you or for these guys by not doing it all in the first, like not doing the whole nine years upfront?
It means that we have to come back to council with a resolution, either one more to get comfort on the additional two or three series, or each series, we would come back with a resolution.
But that's right.
But both bond counsel and financial advisors will be engaged on each issuance.
Either way.
Either way.
And the percentages are set either way?
So, again, if you guys are comfortable with the full program, we can move forward with it as written, but it just gives you some options. So again, I wanted to go over the rate analysis a little bit to see if there was questions. None of this information is new. It was taken directly out of the staff report. It basically, I ran various scenarios with different inflation rates and growth assumptions. So again, this is kind of technical, so if anyone gets lost with what I say, feel free to stop me and ask me to either rephrase or ask a question.
But... Can you do me a favor before you go on? Can you tell everybody what the colors are? It's hard to read those on paper.
Yes. So, I can answer on that either. So the blue at the bottom is the SSMP CPI. The orange then is the incremental SSMP charge if we were to raise rates at the average CCI. CCI is construction cost index versus CPI is consumer price index. The green or gray up there is the safe CPI increase, and the yellow up there is the safe CCI incremental amount. So if you were to, and again, so these were both based off of the last 10-year averages of the CCI and the CPI. And the current market or construction is very strong. So the current CCI for one year was 7.7. So this just factors in or correlates the rate more to the construction costs. That said, the way the program is currently written is that we automatically increase the rates by the CPI. But we still go to CUAD and to council through the master fee schedule, and the code does not limit us from increasing it more than CPI. What you could, if you wanted to automatically increase it by the CCI to better correlate that construction, that would require a code change. And again, it would just make the minimum the CCI rather than the minimum the CPI, and you still have the ability to raise rates or to do that through the master fee schedule.
I thought we talked about this with the SSMP when we indexed it because it hadn't been indexed at all before, right?
Right.
But we just indexed it to CPI, not to CCI?
Yeah, all fees are indexed to CPI. SDCs and stuff like that are indexed to the CCI. So for some reason, that decision was made quite a while ago. We just stayed with it.
We just made it consistent for ease of administration. And, I mean, the current year's 7.7 is what is driving this analysis because it was so much higher than the CCI in the current year.
You haven't let the stock market just correct it.
And then uncorrect it.
And then it's good now.
Yeah.
So again, we're using flat averages, but they will be up and down more.
Well, we can't predict the future.
Sure.
And that's part of why we're trying, we're bringing you a more conservative approach, just to make sure we're making an educated decision based on our market trends.
I mean, we, those of you who get that Christian Kaler monthly economic stuff from the state, he's shown for months now how construction wages have gone up so much more than any other category of wages. So I mean, that reflects that, too.
Any other questions on rate analysis? So again, basically, what I've shown through the net funding is that there's coverage through the three sources of funding, safe, SSMP, and gas tax at the assumed CPI averages or above. I just wanted you to have the information. We're not asking for you to make any decisions on rates today. And this is in response to a question received from a constituents. But basically, we wanted to confirm that allowable costs of the proposal, the program is structured to maintain compliance with the three funding sources of safe, SSMP, and gas tax. So an example I've included herein is that a path not constructed in the street right of way wouldn't be eligible for state gas tax funds. However, all paths proposed within the program are specified in the safe program and therefore allowable costs of that program. So these are all transportation funding, but we have been balancing to them, to the specific programs. Any questions there or additions you?
So by gas tax, that's also incorporating the increase in gas tax with the last year's transportation bill?
So if you look on here, I actually split that out.
Okay.
Because we've been talking about the new gas tax for some of the additional projects included in the bonding, like the South Downtown Plaza, some of the other additions that we've added to the CMP. We were specifically designating for that new gas tax cost of money. But we do have money that we traditionally spent through the state, the gas tax we have been getting, that we traditionally spend on capital, that within the nine-year program, we don't have programs or allocated specifically to any of these projects, which means that that funding is available for either additional projects after the nine years, additional projects that come up, or for maintenance, maintenance-type capital expenses.
So we're not bonding to all of our transportation dollars because really the short-term is...
That are huge for capital.
Okay.
So I have lots of questions, but you were talking about 30 years.
Right.
Does that, is that clock on 30 years start on the first tranche? And then we're paying interest for 30 years on that tranche? Or does that pay off early, and then the other tranches? The aggregate gets you to 30 years?
I'm talking about this one.
You can't.
Go ahead.
I'll have a guy give an answer and then you can follow it up.
No, that sounds good.
No, that sounds good.
So the scenarios that we've run, we have, I think we don't even have a 30-year bond in the first year, in the first Tranche. Um, but basically, the way the resolution is written is that we could issue debt up to 30 years. Um, and then we have the other, them structured now, so that they would stay within that 30 years, um, in the scenarios. The resolution gives us the authority to have maturities up to 30 years for each issuance. Um, that the issuance time is kind of like toothpaste, I guess, is the analogy that John would give.
Well, when you issue or when you repay, the principal amounts are toothpaste. You can kind of put them wherever makes sense. Um, I don't know, toothpaste isn't maybe the best way to talk about these dollar amounts.
Basically.
But you have flexibility in terms of when you repay. Um, this, the structure that, that we've proposed based on current market conditions is to, is to essentially backload this first issuance as a hedge against rising interest rates, because right now, the, the long, the 30-year Treasury is at 3%. And the two-year Treasury is at 2%. And so, you know, whereas normally that might, that might range from two to four, you know, a bigger spread, where you would save a lot more money by borrowing shorter, the savings from borrowing shorter, at least in terms of interest cost, aren't as, as evident. Um, and by going a portion of your debt, it's, it's not like a 30-year mortgage where you're paying an equivalent amount each year. You actually would have a significant portion of this initial principal being repaid in, I think, years 26 through 30, or, I don't, uh, right here. And then a portion being repaid in the very short run, because you, you want to essentially use up that coverage that you have from your revenue sources. So you're, you're making larger payments here, and then in 2024, it's scheduled to have the payments drop off, essentially to be interest only from this first borrowing, so that you have room to borrow for the next phase. Part of the anticipated benefit is that should we return to, a couple of potential scenarios. One is should rates go higher still, the longest part of the program, you've already, you've already borrowed your longest piece, and you've borrowed it at close to, you know, like, 3.5 or so percent is, is what we're anticipating, rather than rates have gone up, and now the longest part is costing you 4.5%. And, and yes, we've modeled for that, but it'd be really nice to not have too much exposure in that way. Um, very rarely has the, we, we call it the yield curve, it's basically the difference between short-term interest rates and long-term interest rates, where, you know, right now, a two-year rate is 2% and a 30-year rate is 3%. Normally, there's, there's a bigger gap. Um, we're doing the longest part first, so that you're borrowing in 2024, and again, in 2027 are actually much, much shorter. And whether, whether rates are much higher and, and you're getting some benefit from not being as far out of the curve, or just the curve is more normal, and so you're getting more benefit from being shorter, we see it as, in the current market, because the gap between short-term rates and long-term rates is so small, it's a, it's really a relatively affordable, natural hedge on your rates. It's, it's the best way to contain some of that interest rate risk.
Basically, taking advantage of the short, long-term rates now, so that if the rates go up, you can borrow shorter and have cash flow.
So, when stock markets do go down, what do bond prices need to do?
Well, it used to be really predictable, that stock, stock markets would go down, bond prices, and therefore rates, bond prices would go up and rates would go down. Um, it's, it's a lot less predictable, we have so much more of a global market than we used to have. A lot of the, well, Janet Yellen in her kind of exit interview the other day said asset valuations are elevated. She didn't use inflated, which was nice, they're elevated. A big part of that is that corporate borrowers have been borrowing so cheaply for so long, and that's, that's a big part of how they're throwing off these profits, is they're, they're not necessarily over-leveraged, but they're leveraged, and they have really low interest rates. Well, if the rate goes up, it's going to eat at their profits. And so we have this weird dynamic where rates are going up because of various forces, and stock, rates are going up, which means bond prices are falling, but stocks are falling at the same time, because there's, there's this correlation between the two.
That is, the opposite of the inverse correlation it used to be.
It's, there used to be a very predictable inverse correlation, and it doesn't exist right now. I, I think if we, in a full-on recession, a couple of really nice things for your program would be your construction costs will be much lower, and your interest costs will also be much lower. Um, you know, I don't think you can plan for that. It'd be, it'd be great, but, but, I mean, there may be other bad news that makes it so you don't want to proceed, you know, in that instance as well. I, I, I don't think it's prudent to plan on rates being lower, just because you want to make sure that you're able to fund the program that you want to.
In the event the rates go up.
Uh, in the event the rates go up. But, you know, we have a relatively flat yield curve, and a, a flat yield curve, I, I think, has never not led to a recession. So, you know, I, my expectation is that, that sometime not, in the not-too-far future, we are going to experience a recession, and rates will be lower and construction costs will be lower. When that hits relative to the program plan, I, you know, I couldn't predict and wouldn't want to try to.
And could we refinance if rates go lower and we've already taken out?
That's what we're talking about doing on the.
On the other, we got the main mail from, yeah.
Okay. Let me go in the direction.
No.
Oh, but we already talked about this, we're going backwards. So, all costs are allowable under the programs, applicable programs. So, um, we want to talk a little bit about our capital improvement investment policy. The excerpt there is what is in our policy. So seven basically talks about pay-as-you-go for reoccurring operating and, and maintenance. These expenses are considered to be new improvements, um, and basically, given the desired nine-year construction period, resources from cash flow would not be available to complete these improvements during that period. So it makes sense to use financing. And then, um, for eight.
Wait, wait, could you go back to that again?
Yes.
Oh, you're, okay, okay.
Next goes into eight, so do you have questions on seven? Seven was more of the pay-as-you-go.
Does this say the same words as what the one we just saw, because I didn't finish reading?
For eight.
Okay. It does say the same as for eight.
Yes. So an eight on the first column is exactly what's in the policy on the first page. Um, so our policy is when the use of debt will result in total project cost savings that exceed borrowing costs. Um, and my response is per the conservative projections in the scenarios presented, this consideration is not achieved. Um, and John could speak to it a little bit, but the default there is this is based on the assumptions that, it based on several assumptions, and actual results could vary. So if the cost of construction can maintain the 7.7% cost, construct, um, our savings would go up higher than what they are in the productions. That said, if we went into a deep recession and construction costs went way down, lower than the 3%, then our savings would be less than what we've projected, so.
Although then our rate could also be a lot lower.
What, we could refinance the rate, yes.
Yeah, and, and the rate on the 2024 and 2027.
Would be lower.
Be much, be much lower as well. If you, if you straightlined a 7.7% CCI compared to a 3.8% borrowing cost, then, you know, obviously, you're, you're saving by borrowing and doing the projects.
Additionally, as I read eight, um, it's at the, A through E should be considered, um, that, it doesn't say that all of the five criteria need to be present. So, criteria B is when project's useful life will exceed the terms of the financing. Um, we did some high-level calculations, and the average useful life of the project in the bonding proposal is estimated to be 45 years. This is based on assumptions that concrete have a 50-year life, and asphalt has about a 30-year life. We put those together, and there's more concrete than asphalt, that you have about an average 45-year life, which exceeds the 30-year maturities. Um, there would still be maintenance required, but the asset itself would meet that criteria. C is resources are deemed sufficient to repay debt. Per the funding analysis, or the rate analysis that we did, the resources of the three sources are sufficient to meet the surface debt of the whole program. Um, D, market can just present favorable interest rates. Historically, these interest rates are very low. I mean, if you go back to the 80s, you're in, you're above 10%. So, and you can't get much lower than 2%, 3%. So.
Even only going back 20 years, so to 1998, um, you know, it's just definitely in the low-interest-rate era, um, 10-year rates have only been lower than they are now about 16% of the time. So it's.
So the market is favorable, considered favorable. And then, um, criteria E would be to not adversely affect credit rating, um, and with consideration of, I have some more slides related to bond rating, but assuming that we are, uh, keep the rates sufficient to cover the debt, we do not believe that this level of debt would negatively affect our credit rating. So again.
Before we go any further, when you said that you don't read the policy as requiring those five, they seem to be like suggestions or guidelines, where, where did you get that announced?
So it said, the city will consider the use of debt financing for capital projects and equipment under the following circumstances. So there's, you can have some circumstance, some of the circumstances, um, present that, but not all of them. So again, if you need something to be done now, and that need to have it done sooner outweighs the costs, then it, and your cash flow doesn't cover the project in the time you need it, then it's a reasonable consideration.
What was this policy written?
Good question. Um, I went back through and read the whole thing last night. There's a lot of financial policies. Um, and it basically says that we'll reevaluate it with the budget process, so that is what we will do. Because there are several things that are updated, including a reference to a, um, there's like, basically a budget subcommittee that they referenced several times throughout, and since my tenure, all we've had is the whole budget committee. So there are several things that should be updated. Um, so here's just some information to give you some relative information about bond ratings. So on the left is Moody's scale, so the triple A would be the highest grade rating, but if you look at the exhibit B, that's the percentage of, um, distribution is very, very low to get there. Um, we are sitting at the AA2 level, um, and per our financial advisor, to increase, uh, an increase in rating to AA1 would only benefit us by about five to 10 basis points in interest rate. So, uh, but it would require, so if we go down here, it would require us to carry a lot more cash reserves to get to the higher ratings, and so the cost benefit is probably not there. Um, our current rating at AA2 is considered very favorable in state.
So if I understand that exhibit two, we're in better financial shape than 85% of cities in the United States. Is that right?
Well, the bond market believes.
And you've actually received an increase in our bond rating.
What? Uh, in 2017, our, um, full faith and credit, uh, bonds were increased. The rating was increased from AA3 to AA2, and that is the same rating that our GEO bonds have gotten. And so then again, here are kind of like, the median ratings of, uh, ratings of US cities with populations of less than 50,000, and so we were kind of looking at how we benchmark, and we're pretty solidly in the double range. Anything else you want to state eventually?
Um, no, I, I, well, maybe, maybe just really briefly, in the last ratings report, they, they talked about things that could raise the rating, things that could lower the rating, and, and essentially, they were looking for pretty major impacts, you know, a change in the, a significant sustained increase in the, in the overall property value, which has been going on, you know, I mean, that, that has been going on, but they didn't want to see that go on and on and on.
Which would take time.
Which clearly takes time. It's not something we can make a change today that is going to impact, you know, this next bond issue.
What does the value of the property make a difference in Oregon, where we're kept our property taxes at 3% per year?
Yes.
Whether or not it's.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter as to value. That may be true for most United States.
You're talking about existing property.
Yeah.
So, but any new, any new construction. Any new development is, you know, obviously tacked on to the prior base, that can only grow to 3%.
Okay.
But it's, it's basically their way of saying, you need to be this big, and you need to have this kind of wealth profile. They, they have kind of some, some settings.
So actually, the fact that it's stable at, that I assumed besides compression, I think is part of why the market upgraded our full, they upgraded basically most of Oregon's ratings. So we weren't the only ones that was upgraded, and it's, I think, based on our tax structure and the fact that although it has limited growth, it's more stable, because it's based on that rate.
In there.
Generally, you have to have major compression, because there's generally the, a significant gap between the market rate and the.
Well, market value or assessed value.
Assessed value, because of that cushion, our, our revenues are stable, even though they're limited.
Got it.
Um, so again, this goes back to, um, we are, the issuance of this debt would increase our current debt by over 262%. So currently, we have 19 million, a little over 19 million, um, in debt outstanding. Uh, the limitations of ORS 287 really only apply to GEO debt, or general obligation bonds, which are approved by voters, and the voters then pay a higher tax rate to pay that. So full faith and credit debt doesn't apply to these limits. However, um, I thought it was a good basis for you guys to know where we are currently in debt and where we're going, um, and that the whole program, as it is stated, as long as our, the revenues sustain the debt service, we don't anticipate the additional debt negatively affecting our bond rating.
So the 50 million is all Tranches?
Yes.
And so basically, what we're doing in the first Tranche is doubling our, you said 19 million we have now.
Right.
So we're pulling our debt.
So with, with it as it's structured, it would double it.
And, I mean, you had it in your memo about going for full faith and credit versus going against the.
A revenue pledge.
Yeah, a revenue pledge. Are you going to talk about that some more?
So I can. Actually, this is my second-to-last slide, so, um, yes, we are, per bond council and our financial advisors, we're proposing that we would issue full faith and credit bonds. So that basically means that, um, all of the resources of the city would be dedicated to repay the debt if the dedicated, um, to repay the debt. So basically, we've shown you that the, um, transportation fees are sufficient to pay the debt, but if they weren't for some reason, then we would have to go to our general fund revenues and other unrestricted revenues to pay the debt. And so the market looks at that more favorably, and we get, therefore get a lower interest rate than if we were to purely issue revenue bonds, in which we'd be pledging just those revenues to pay that debt.
I wonder why? Why is that? I mean, if there's a dedicated revenue stream, why isn't that unfavorable?
Well, if the revenue stream stopped, but that's the only thing pledged, then the good news for you is you're not open for the bonds. But the bad news for the investors is there's no money coming. So they want a higher interest rate because of that risk. They, they think the risk of the city of Milwaukee as an operation not being able to somehow pay is, is less of a risk than the SAFE, SSMP, and gas tax funds not being sufficient to pay. pay is less of a risk than the safe SSMB and gas tax funds not being sufficient to pay. You know, another important consideration in this is that, from the point of view of the rating agencies and from the point of view of investors, if you've placed your full faith and credit in all your legally available resources, and the revenues that are coming in are sufficient to cover the debt service just one time, then you'll get, essentially, it's not a ding against your, against your full faith and credit. They see it as self-sustaining. Whereas if it's just a revenue pledge, it's typical that you would have a minimum revenue covenant of maintaining 1.25, maybe 1.5 times coverage. So, even though you had enough money coming in that you could have paid debt service on a larger project secured by your full faith and credit, you'd be stuck, maybe not the right word, but you'd be limited to doing a smaller project if it were only secured by the revenue, because the revenue would be required to exceed.
Exceed.
The debt service.
I think this has changed, I mean, in the market. Like, when I was in school, at least, revenue bonds were always considered most secure because you had, you could very specifically say, "This revenue, this expense is covered," which we're showing, but now the market says, "Okay, that's great that that's covered, but if for some reason that changed, you also have coverage of the other sources." So, another place I've seen it really common to issue full faith and credit versus revenue or something else is in the urban renewal bonds, which, I mean, obviously, it has a dedicated revenue source and protecting that revenue, but almost every time I've seen a bond issued against urban renewal, you're issuing it as a full faith and credit of the city.
And as a full faith and credit bond, what the county has in mind for the Oak Grove Library?
No, I'm sorry.
Are they going to the voters or not?
That's a great question.
Because if they're going to the voters, it would be a GEO bond.
Yeah.
Not going to the voters.
I don't think they're going. I don't think they're, I hope, I think they're hoping not to go to the voters, I would put it that way.
So, with that, do, the next slide is actually related to the consent agenda item I had, because I had gotten a lot of questions on that. So, with that, we have 10 minutes until the State of the Union, or is it State of the City?
Wow, I just got elevated.
You could probably do a better job than the State of the Union.
I really swear.
State of the City address. And we are looking for direction on whether or not to pursue the whole program, pursue phase one, or.
Or at least proceed with phase one, and if you want to come back and talk about the others, we can do that.
So, I think, you know, particularly phase one is so much about safe routes to school stuff. It's not getting kids to school safely. I don't, you know, you can't put a dollar figure on a kid's life. So, as much as it pains me to pay this kind of interest, I realize it's low interest rates, but it's still, you know, in the end, if we do the whole thing, we're talking $35 million in interest, $450 million for the concrete. It's a lot of money. So, I would be strongly in favor of continuing with this first phase, exactly as planned, and then start exploring with our federal people and other possibilities for trying to complete the rest of it without spending that kind of interest. It's a long shot, I know, but it's, it just, it's, I think we should do it, and I, it's important to do it because of what we're building. At the same time, you've got families that are putting in their $4.70 or $4.80 every month, you know, scraping sometimes to do that, and 40% of that's going to go in some banker's pocket. It just doesn't seem right. So, I personally am going to work to see if we can find other ways to finance the rest of it, so that we can continue with the nine-year program and get it built out. But I think we should move ahead with this one as planned, so that we can get it done.
Wouldn't you see us coming back, and this is sort of a group question for, for the answer on the next.
Phase two.
Phase, yeah.
So, we're, I'm going to just get close to this mic, because I gave away my mic. So, we would be going out to bond probably around June for this portion. We may go a little sooner, depending on what it's looking like in the market, just to make sure we hit the market. We're going to pull some of the engineering pieces for phase two into this tranche, so it's going to be a slightly different number. I don't think we upgraded the numbers. Okay, so we'll have to bring that back to you in the next couple of months, anyway. And then, I would recommend that we come back to you sometime, maybe right after the budget cycle, once we've seen where the interest rates are and where everything's at, say, July or August, with an update around tranche two and three, if you're comfortable with that.
So, we would be bringing back the approval of.
For tranche one.
Series.
Whatever.
Whatever you'd like to call them.
That portion.
One, sooner than later, so that we have the commitments and we can move forward with issuing the debt between now and June. So, we had planned to come back next time, considering that we're going, next meeting, considering that we're updating the numbers a little bit. It probably will be March, mid, late March, before we have that update for the approval, but we'd need that approval to then move forward to get that issued by June.
But that's just for the first one?
For the first one. So, with the nine-year program, we wouldn't actually be issuing debt for phase two or three until 2021 and then 2024. That said, to kind of vet, so that you guys know that we're vetting other financing options and seeing about those other phases, we can come up back super. The debt itself wouldn't be anticipated to be issued until 2021.
And my only ask for the July or later date is that Haley's also doing budget. So, I just want to get us through budget, get through adoption, and then we'll come back at that point to have further conversation about how you want to do those next two phases. But we will bring, as Haley mentioned, the piece for the approval for phase one.
I need to go on the record and say that I don't.
You're turning our lights off?
I don't know. I think that the system may have turned off.
I just want everyone to know that I, I think that this is way too much, and that there's not a need to do it in nine years, to increase our debt 262%, increase the monthly fees over time, the net increase of 21.8 million. I think it's too much, and I don't support it. I don't think that we need to do it in nine years and take on this kind of debt to the city. So, actually, let everyone know that. I know it's not a popular stand, but that's how.
And how do you feel about the first tranche?
Well, I don't see what voting for the first tranche does for us. Still, the percentage was astronomical, and I just, I don't think we need to rush. We heard from Chuck, and the disruption to the city for nine years, half the streets. I don't think we're going to be able to do it in nine years, even the best of circumstances. This is just a lot of debt that, when I look at these numbers, and I looked at that 33 million in debt for 50 million in proceeds, I just thought it was too much. I blanched.
So, sorry, I want questions.
I get the argument about, say, I mean, I think we should prioritize, prioritize as much as we can for the safe routes. I get the argument about a child could die. It's an emotional argument, it's a powerful argument, but I just think it's too much to do it in nine years.
Can you remind me, can you remind me what your suggestion was last time when we talked about this? Was it to do it in 12 or?
I wanted to look at, and I'd asked about numbers, if we could do it in 15. I mean, I know that originally the program was 25, and pushing it up to nine had a significant cost. When I look at those factors that talked about the city's debt policy, when it talks about significant cost savings, there's not significant cost savings. In fact, we're going backwards by 20-something million that we could use for a lot of other things over time. So, I think, I don't think I would support quicker than 15.
And what was the savings? We looked, didn't we look at that?
We did for the 12-year. The issue is that, so there is savings for, on the design side, and it was a few million dollars. On the debt issuance side, Haley had some concerns about whether or not you would actually incur additional cost if we still bonded during that tax period. But that doesn't mean that that has to be the decision that council made if you guys were looking for a different scenario. I will also say, there's some concern with tranche one, that we do have several decisions that's been made by council that we have been feeding into that tranche. So, if we don't do that, we are going to have to bring back a list of projects that we're going to have to reconsider, including South Downtown.
Yeah.
Totally can. But we're starting to get a little bit close on when we would have to have those decisions made in order to do the design work, if you want to do them at this more rapid pace. And so, I guess my question back to council is, is that where a majority of council is? Because if so, we can totally do that. If we're not there, then I would recommend that we still proceed with coming back to you with a resolution in the coming months, and we come back to you at the next meeting with the pound.
I think cash flow-wise, you're never, you're not going to get anything shorter than the 25 years, and so you'd be looking at issuing debt later. Market conditions, if you look at historical trends, aren't they to go up, so your debt would come at a higher cost later, and you'd still have to issue it to get it done in 15 years. So, if you didn't do, again, we can do further analysis, but the farther out you issue the debt, depending on the market, the higher risk you have of higher interest rates, not lower, and you don't have sufficient cash flow unless you hit the 25 years.
I understand that, but if you look at our market and what's been going on, it's just, as you were saying, it's a different world today, and so it's just hard to say. And we start saying from historical perspectives, this is what will happen. I think you can throw out historical perspectives to some degree with what's been going on. And I get that my position here is maybe not the popular one, I understand that, but.
Actually, I think it's an important one. Yeah, and I think it's great feedback, and I hope you don't feel like staff is in disagreement. It's a lot of debt. We understand that, and it's why we've been coming to you for these types of answers. If you guys need a little more time to think about the fact, or more time to talk, since we are at time, we can do that. It just means that it's harder and harder for us to deliver on this summer's projects, and so as long as it's a conscious decision that that's what we're doing, I'm great with it.
So, I would reiterate that I blanched, too. I actually, blanched is a very kind word for what I did. And I want to find other answers. I want to find different ways to do this. That said, the other thing I don't want is to have the children of the children who are currently going to school now finally getting to walk on the sidelines, that they've been paying for for 30 years. I want to get as much of the critical infrastructure in so that it can be used as being paid for local shares. So, I'm still pretty firm that I would want to approve this first tranche, get it going, get the projects going, get the things designed, and then put all of our efforts into looking for other ways to finish it.
Because even if we don't end up pursuing a second tranche, we, by front-loading some of the design, we're ahead that much, and we're ready going into year five and six or whatever, we're set to build, right? We sort of keep some momentum.
And a lot of things are changing. You know, there's the safe routes to school, $15,000 a year, that's going to be distributed statewide. We have a pretty good shot at a good chunk of that. There are ways that we're going to be able to start, you know, eating away at this, and that's what I think we should put a lot of effort.
There was also gas tax, which is going to go away.
It's going to go away. You're right, and I was going to bring that up, too.
The projections I included were flat, so. Yeah, the reductions.
It completely disappeared. But even if that does happen, if the gas taxes go away, the state will have to move to the empty or something, because they're going to have to fund their roads some way, and we will get our portion of that done.
I just need a stoppage. We'll always stand up.
So, yes, the first tranche.
I'm for a tranche, yeah. Me, too. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
And then reevaluate.
Yeah.